Okay, we are gonna get started on the next meeting of the evening. If I can get your attention, please. I got a little explanation about how the meeting's gonna work tonight. It's a little bit unconventional. So typically in the council meeting, you know, we have a city council meeting. We have all, we take out all the business and oftentimes we go into a closed session and that's at the end of the meeting when everybody leaves. Tonight, we are gonna take roll and we have a little bit of business in closed session at the very beginning of the building. So instead of asking everybody to leave like we do in the past, we are gonna leave for about 10 minutes and come back. So a little bit unconventional, but we felt like that might be a better idea than asking everybody to get out of the seats and leave. So with that being said, we're gonna go right into roll call and then, as I said, we will leave and come back in about 10 minutes to get going with the regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Mark.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Mayor Bozo.
Here. Okay, we'll now announce item 2.1, which is the closed session the mayor referred to. It's a conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D and paragraph three of subdivision E of Government Code, Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code, Section 17A113B, based upon receipt of a written communication from Shankman and Hughes, PC, available for inspection upon request at the office of the city clerk, one case as defendant. So we'll now take public comment on the closed session only, then I will advise the council about going into closed session. So if there is any, do we have any public comment?
No public comment for the closed session.
All right. In that case, it is my opinion that to discuss these matters publicly would prejudice unalterably the position of the city and I therefore recommend that we go into closed session. Council, we have to vote on whether to go into closed session.
Okay.
We don't need a roll call.
Okay. I give thumbs up. Closed session.
Okay. The vote is unanimous. We are now adjourning to closed session. We'll be back in, the mayor says about 10 minutes. Okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Appreciate it. We're gonna adjourn, are we gonna go back into open session? City attorney?
Right. And the report out for the closed session is there was no reportable action taken. So now we're going back to item one, I believe.
Okay, thank you. So before we get going, I want to mention, we're gonna have a few opportunities tonight for public speaking, as always. There are two particular items. One, to speak on items not on the agenda, typical. So there are a few people that have signed up for that. Then we have another item at 10.1, that there are many people signed up for that. So we will be, that speaking time will be limited to one minute and we will move right into it. So I just wanna let you know that in advance, okay? So the first thing that we're gonna do is a pledge of allegiance and Councilmember Klein will lead us and please remain standing for the invocation after that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, please remain standing for Pastor Nick Lamout.
Before I begin, I just wanna say thank you so much to the council for having me out tonight to the invocation. And with that, let's begin. Gracious and loving God, thank you for this opportunity to come before you in prayer on behalf of our city and its leaders. Today I pray for the members of the city council, asking that you grant them wisdom and unity and they make decisions that impact our community. May their discussion be filled with integrity, respect, and a desire to serve with justice and compassion. Grant them patience in times of challenge, courage in moments of uncertainty, and unity when perspectives differ. Help them to listen deeply to the voices of those they represent, to hear the cries of the vulnerable and hopes of the families and the dreams of the young. May their leadership foster a community where every person is valued, every neighborhood thrives, and every future is bright. Strengthen them to build a city marked by justice, kindness, and peace. We pray for our city. May peace, prosperity, and goodwill surround it. Help us work together for the common good, meeting the needs of the most vulnerable, and fostering an environment where all can thrive. We ask for your protection over our community and for strength and encouragement for all those in positions of leadership. Bless them with endurance, clarity, and a heart to serve. I pray this. Amen.
Moving on to item 1.4, city clerk's report on posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted on Friday, February 21st at 11:30 a.m.
Thank you. Moving on to orders of the day. None, no orders of the day. Moving on to 1.7, employee introductions. There are no employee introductions. Moving on to ceremonial items, number four, and we have a proclamation. 4.1 is a proclamation declaring the month of March of 2025 as American Red Cross Month. And Camille McCormick, would you please come up? Okay, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Gilroy has a long history of helping our neighbors in need, American Red Cross is a special time to recognize, excuse me, American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help community members and, whereas, these heroes help families find shelter after a home fire. They give blood to help trauma victims and cancer patients. They deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital. They use their life-saving skills to save someone from a heart attack, drowning or choking. They enable children around the globe to be vaccinated against measles and rubella and, whereas, across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. In fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. It collects nearly 40% of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. And, whereas, we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this 24th day of February 2025, together with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month. Please come down, council. Please come down.
I'm not supposed to go out, but we have been a Red Cross chapter since August 21st, 1917, and I have the certificate. Gilroy has been designated a chapter and we give the most blood in the whole Silicon, Northern California area. We give the most blood, Gilroy.
Ready? One, two, three. Take a couple. Again, one, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Do you mean for the second item?
For 4.1.
Okay. We have a speaker for item 4.1.
Martha Martinez. You'll have three minutes.
I'll take one minute and add my two to the other item. No, I wanna thank Mayor Bozo and city councilman for the proclamation of the Red Cross. I'm right now, Martha Martinez reside at 1020 Ortega Circle, an ordinary citizen of Gilroy, longtime Gilroian. But right now, I wanna speak as president of Sunrise Rotary and Sunrise Rotary has been, as Camille, as McCormick has stated, we have the largest blood donations for the city of Gilroy. We've been sponsoring the blood drives for the last five or six years and the reason that I'm saying, came up here is because I would like to entertain the idea that we partner with the city of Gilroy. There is a cost for a facility usage every time we do a blood drive and that would be nice to be a shared opportunity with the city, especially, we have our next drive coming up on May 31st. It is now scheduled at the Veterans Hall, but we would love to entertain the idea of being partners with you and having consistent blood drives. We usually do them once a quarter with the city of Gilroy. Thank you.
No further speakers.
Thank you. We did have a further proclamation. There was nobody here to receive it, but I just wanted to mention it. There's a second proclamation for the Youth Arts Month and the Youth Arts Month showcases the positive impact and association between teachers and students at the K through 12 level throughout Santa Clara County. So I just wanna make sure we mention that. They'll be picking up their proclamation sometime this week, I believe. Okay, moving on to number five, council correspondence. This is information only? Nothing? Okay. It's 5.1, it's the Civic Center Master Plan Public Workshop Flyer. There's no comment on that. Great, okay. And moving on to number six, we have some presentations to council. So 6.1, annual presentation from the city historian, Toby Eichelberry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and team members of council. This is my annual report, back in on the position for city historian. Just wanna kind of go back a little bit over what our goal is. It's basically to increase the public awareness of civic history of Gilroy. We're a partner with the city clerk's office, Gilroy Museum, as well as the Gilroy Historical Society, in providing supports to inquiries about the city's past, educate and promote Gilroy's rich community heritage through written articles, research, communication, and education. With the partnership with the city clerk's office, I've been working with, doing laserfish transcriptions of minutes, resolutions, and ordinances. As most of you are aware, a lot of it has points where you can't even be researched online. A lot of it was handwritten and all that stuff. So I've been transcribing all of this into Word docs so it could be easily searched and be able to put together for research purposes and that. So in the past few years, I've actually completed 27% of all of the minutes. So there's about 4,500 minutes there. I've done a little over 1,200 of them. Resolutions, there's 6,000 resolutions. I've done a little over 400 and that's about 7% of them and about 13% of the ordinances, which there is about 2,000. In total, there's about 16% of all of the history of Gilroy in these three realms. What I've completed so far is years 1868 through 1871 and 1916 through 1951. And basically with those or with 106 summary files, which I would have done, is taking each of the individual documents, scanned them into one year, so you could see one year summaries of each one of those results are. So for this last year, I finished 412 documents, which comprises of eight years, 1916 through 1919 and 1948 through 1951. Some of the highlights from each of the years, just to go through these really quick. In 1916, basically was when we actually decided to change the street lighting system and we moved over to looking at luminous arc in there versus just gas being actually inside of those lights. For those of you who are aware, the Fifth Street Fire Station was actually built and we actually built it for $6,500 and did it in three months. Ordinance number 283, I mean, that was prohibiting the hitching of horses to fire hydrants or lampposts at the time. Health officer presented new state laws requiring dairy inspections of all the milk delivered for test of cows unless they are pasteurized. This was the first step of trying to, basically trying to work on the milk deliveries. As well as, schools must have now have medical inspections of the children and there must be enforcement of Vaccination Act. Inquiries were also made at this time with the postal delivery. This was the first year in which they're looking to get delivery of mail to your home. Back before then, you had to go to the post office or pay for somebody to deliver to you. It was also the time of election and back in those days, it was every two years, we actually re-voted for mayor and all council in every election every two versus the switching we have for right now. George Wentz got re-elected for his second term and he only worked for two terms and then in there are some names you'll see in there, one of them like Princeville. 1917, health officers produced endorsements of scarlet fever. This was a time when scarlet fever was running rampant through California and basically we started putting some enforcement of quarantines inside of Gilroy at the time. Basically, the Gilroy Fire Department was broken up between two divisions, Vigilance Company was one of them, and this is when the fire chief actually made the design for the emblem that they carry on their shields today. 1917, 1918 were very dry years and we had a lot of fires these years throughout the city of Gilroy. The Music City Hall roof had winds that came in and tore it apart, as well as the city hall roof was destroyed partially and then they had to go back and re-solder all of the metal and paint it. At the same time with the growth, we added two new water wells into the city of Gilroy. In 1918, Pickwick Stages granted permit to transport passengers and express packages between Los Angeles and San Francisco. Why is this company important? This became Greyhound buses. William Ratkey presents a plan to construct a 10-story reinforced concrete building in 1918 to be built, only for it to be put on hold because of World War I. World War I was happening and basically the National Guard industries declared non-war construction must be deferred. On top of that, number one supporter, the mayor, no longer got re-elected. H.G. Robinson became the mayor and after the war, basically money needed to be focused on other things other than a 10-story building. As well, this year was, an ordinance was passed where we had Spanish influenza and basically were told to wear masks and covering inside of assembled areas. Much different as we have COVID. But only lasted for two weeks because Spanish influenza never really made it down to Gilroy. Made it down to North San Jose and never went any further, so after two weeks, the order was rescinded. In 1919, J.M. Hoesch retired after 20 years servicing as the police judge, as well as the Justice of Peace for the Gilroy Township. Also, 1919, a special election was held, integration for an ordinance eliminating and regulating the sales of spirits, malt, and venus and other alcoholic leaders. This was rejected. What happened next year? Prohibition. Resolution passed to purchase land from Miller and Lux, where we actually expanded our current sewer system. And then this was all done with a special election to sell bonds to construct the cost of this. As well as in 1919, Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Committee requested permission to erect a monument at the intersection of Monterey and U.S. Avenue. This never got done because they were designing at the time, it was a, basically a swimming pole and it was a lot of fight for the next two to three years, order the design of that pool or whether or not there should be a pool, and then therefore it just got waylaid altogether and so no memorial was established. As well this year, ordinance was passed preventing devices known as punchboards, as you can see in the picture on the screen. These basically were legal gambling devices where you could turn around and pay money to punch holes inside of the cards, which basically would turn around and give you cash rewards and prizes inside the store or gifts in the store. And then basically ended up into the pool halls for additional forms of gambling. So as part of such, as most of the state of California, this got banned. Skipping over to 1948, this was basically the time of our expansion in Gilroy. The First Western Edition basically was, it was the first bit of annexed territory we acquired. Hecker Pass, the Miller, the Princeville, the Third Street was what was considered the George Millis was re-elected for his fifth term as mayor. He went on to serve six terms. Councilman Mason was also one in here. He served in another five to six of those as well. Division of Highways informs Gilroy at this time, they wanted to expand Monterey Street from 60 to 68 feet. This actually gave us the divider down the middle of Monterey that we have today, was when we did that expansion. J.H. Jamison was hired to review and assess the police department at the time. Basically, this was what was known at the time where we were a very small police force, half a dozen members, most of them were volunteers, and it was all ran with a city marshal. At the same time, towards the end of the year, another special election was held for the Second Western Edition. This was Princeville III to Miller to Fifth Street was another subdivision that was actually created in there. And believe it or not, we actually had a radio station, KROB, which was here in Gilroy and their employees basically were put under the employ of the city of Gilroy because at nighttime they were actually was the actual voice behind all of the sheriff cars running around town and so therefore needed to be under control. And then they basically were gonna add a sheriff substation to be installed in Gilroy, which they ended up doing. In 1949, that Jamison report was completed where basically an investigation was hearing to conduct some becoming of the city marshal and it basically ordered 470 came with the organization which created the city of Gilroy's police department as we know of today. It actually brought in modernization, it actually created titles and positions, it actually set up rules and engagements and that for the police force at the time. Captain E. Cochran of the National Guard unit appeared before council regarding damage done onto Rosanna Street with basically the ingress and egress from the auditorium's properties. Those who are not familiar, the Wheeler Auditorium that sits over here actually was rented out by the army and it would actually house, house all of the tanks and vehicles and stuff for exercises in here and actually was here in support through the World War II. But afterwards, they kept on running it as a National Guard unit. And as such, we had problems with the tanks, which were knocking down fence posts and everything else in the streets and that, so we had to kind of find a way to make it a little bit more safer for them. And then this was the first year the Chamber of Commerce relinquished decorating of Christmas and handed it over to the city of Gilroy. 1950, the establishment of the Office of the Chief Administration Officer was created today. That's our city administrator. Sure. As we said, Mr. Millis was elected as the sixth term and then they established the Office of the Water Collector, you know, as we grew the downtown city hall area. And then we annexed the Rents Ranch, which was Hecker Pass, Wayland, Hannah, Wellburn. And then the establishment of the Disaster Council, which basically became the Gilroy's Defense Council. As most of you are aware, you know, during that time period in the 1950s, this was something that we all needed to have set in place in most of the cities, whether do it in case of a major disaster. In 1951, that board was created and we actually became a charter member of the Disaster Plan Board of the Santa Clara County. And then the Raisup Division, Monterey, Seventh, Princeville, and Tenth Street was actually created and then a resolution was to de-control rents. And then lastly, the Jehovah's Witness granted permission to erect a church at a corner of Seventh Chestnut, as well as a Church of Christ erected at Seventh Nygloberry. This was two big, basically, growth opportunities happening inside of the religion sector. As part of some of the other stuff that I worked on, articles that I published, I actually did two more articles into the holiday series in which I've done, I did Veterans Day as well as Thanksgiving Day. And then working with the Gilroy Visitor Center, I put together a in-depth article called Passing Through Gilroy, which basically talks everything from the indigenous trails period all the way up to the birth of the highways of 152 and 101. I also did a lot of networking this year, mainly with Monterey Museum, Monterey Hysterical Park, Nevada Museum, Petaluma Library, Cody's Firearms, J.M. Davis Arms and Historical, Collector's Firearms, Petaluma Collective Antiques and Military Mall, as well as a historian inside of Watsonville. I received over 30 different contacts this year. One of them was with our Gilroy Police Department where they actually had a surrender of weapons that got done and amongst them was an antique weapon that they asked me to take a look at. Basically, I was able to put together providence on it, finding it was a disverder, Micolet rifle. Basically, it's a Voda naval ceremonial rifle that's held with their special guard to have. And this was something that was actually produced back in 1788 to 1861, but by looking at the piece itself without taking it apart, definitely looked like it was from early And basically, I tried to work with GPD not only for this, but also tried a home for this. This is the reason why I was contacting a lot of the other museums, trying to find a place where we can donate this to. But unfortunately, in its condition, it was non-donatable. Also did research on the Hatfield Lumber Company. Basically, this was a flaxseed farmer from the 1860s and went as far as in the 1900s where its company came into play. And then this was actually primary, important because the company actually produced all of the telephone poles in, for Casterville. And got some inquiries on Corandaro's Station Historical Marker, as well as after writing the article, a lot of people are asking about hiking trails and historical means outside of Henrico State Park, so one of the ones was Pacheco Falls, and then also working with Bell Station. This year, I also worked with Councilman Hilton and City Minister Forbes in doing third-grade class walkthroughs of the city hall. That was a very fun and enjoyable time. For '25, I'm looking for goals, is about 500 documents transcribed, do two to three more holiday articles, and then I'm gonna start up a new series of articles in which basically working on the agricultural aspect of Gilroy, where the first is gonna be targeting tobacco with the Chinese labor that occurred and then also working in, expanding my network into Merced Kings and Tulare Counties, trying to get their history as it relates to Gilroy as well. That's it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, any questions?
I just wanna say thank you and for anybody that wants to give a tour of city hall, you gotta invite him because he just keeps the entertainment, especially those third graders learning about civics. So I appreciate that. You know, we're lucky to have you here to gather all this information for us and to pass it on. Where can people find more information about this that wanna go deeper? Like, are you on the city's website? If they have questions about certain eras, how do they get in touch with you?
Yes, you can go to the city clerk's webpage. You'll find links to the city historians page from there. All my articles are posted on there, as well as some other little facts and that. You can reach out to me directly. I also do a Facebook page, managing it as well. But for the most part, people will reach out to me and I'm willing to come speak and engage with anyone regarding the history of Gilroy.
Any other questions? Comments? Well, thank you very much. I'll leave you with one. The fact that it costs $6,500 to build a brick building, Station 55, that we refer to it now, is incredible historical perspective. I think a pallet of bricks costs that now, so thank you very much for the historical perspective. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 6.2, public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda?
Mayor Bozo, I have two speakers, Louis Ramirez and Joe Green. You'll each have three minutes. Louis Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I've come here in my capacity as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. I am very pleased about our new commission. You're enthusiastic, filled with people who really care about the city and wanna do some good things for our parks and our recreation. Tonight, I wanna talk about a couple issues we expect to, how the city council and the city can work better with the Gilroy Unified School District. Our city is blessed with some wonderful parks, some beautiful schools, two new junior high schools, one recently high school, and these are facilities that, that I would like to see and the Recreation Department would like to see more joint use. I think many people live in
We're enthusiastic, filled with people who really care about the city and want to do some good things for our parks and our recreation. Tonight, I want to talk about a couple issues we expect to, how the city council and the city can work better with the Gilroy Unified School District. Our city is blessed with some wonderful parks, some beautiful schools, two new junior high schools, one recently high school, and these are facilities that I would like to see in the Recreation Department, like to see more joint use. I think many people live in Gilroy because we're really happy with the open spaces that we have, the parks that we have, and we like to keep them that way. The particular issue I want to talk about today, it came up recently when a few people came to our, I got some phone calls and emails that said that there is no longer access to Roble Park, the open space where the school is, and no longer access at Rainbow Park where Rod Kelly is. I'm aware of why they put those fences there. I support the reason why they put those fences there. Those fences are there for our children's safety, and having two kids have gone through the school system, I support that, I understand that. But there are some concerns from people who know that sharing that space could be a liability issue. The other thing I've heard is that sharing that space could be something that the space isn't taken care of. That's an issue that we face every day in the Parks Department. We're constantly fixing things we don't take care of. But that doesn't mean because of liability issue and there's a care issue, that that can't be discussed and compromised in some way to come together so that space is available during non-school hours. The very fences that protect those children, and the very fences that are going to keep out the children that live in those neighborhoods from flying a kite, from playing baseball, from just being in an open field. So I encourage city council to get together with the school district. I'm sorry I missed the five o'clock meeting at a three-year-old and a one-year-old that to deal with on emergency basis, but anyway, I encourage that. The second thing I want to speak to is a broader issue, but it's the same theme. I was very encouraged to hear Councilman Hilton and Mayor Bozo talk about joint use, something that I was very familiar with when my kids were growing up, and our kids played soccer on those fields, on all the school fields and access to school facilities. There's a lot of things that I think we have just kind of lost sight of in the last ten, fifteen, twenty years that I'd like to see opened up again. So I'm very encouraged by that agreement to do, joint use agreement. I'm hoping that we're, that they could be open for other things, not just, there's a lot of facilities, a lot of we can do with the facilities in school, so thank you for considering that, thank you for your support.
Our final speaker is Joe Green.
Hi, my name is Joe Green, and I've lived in Gilroy for the last twenty-six plus years. I've had five kids go through the school system, just about every school that's in the district. I've been a coach for the last four years at Gilroy High School for cross-country track. I live near Rod Kelly, and I also want to talk about the loss of access to those fields. I also understand the importance of keeping the kids safe, but living near that field, in the evenings, we would see adult soccer teams, kind of pickup soccer using those fields. We saw little league teams using the baseball fields. Both of those areas are now not accessible for people, and it's just kind of sad to see that happen. For the last twenty-six years, it seemed to be a shared space, and it was very sad to see that go away. As a coach at Gilroy High School, we used the bike trail extensively. We ran at Gilroy Christmas Hill Park. It's a good place to get some hill training for cross-country, and I know that early on, the Garlic Festival used the kitchens at some of the schools to prep for the Garlic Festival, and I know that a lot of clubs at the various schools benefit from the Garlic Festival. So shared use of facilities, I think, benefits the whole community, and I hope we can figure out a way to make it work for everybody. Thank you.
Mayor Bozo, we have one additional speaker. Our final speaker is Gary Walton, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I appreciate the opportunity to return today with a progress update on a project located at seventy-five seventy-four Monterey. I'm pleased to report that we've been making meaningful process in advancing our plans to CSG, and we're optimistic about securing our permit soon. I want to thank the chief building official, arranged a very productive meeting with CSG and our team and architect. During that meeting, we meticulously reviewed seven pages of comments provided. I want to acknowledge that Hippolyta was especially instrumental in helping us resolve several key issues. His insights and collaborative approach have been invaluable, and his contributions have significantly smoothed our path forward, and hopefully the plan check process will not extend beyond our four submittals. I'm also pleased to introduce some important partners with us today. Joining me are Carlos Carrera, who, along with his wife Fernanda, owned Batiste Koush by Adega, and David Costa, the executive chef. David is a resident of Gilroy, where he lives with his wife Sandra and their young daughter. It's worth noting that Sandra will be contributing her expertise right here in her hometown, opening Batiste Koush, further underscoring the local commitment behind this project. A little bit about Adega, it opened in San Jose and won their first Michelin star ten months after opening in two thousand fifteen. They opened the Pastelaria in two thousand nineteen, and Pescos in two thousand twenty during COVID, and also is a Michelin-rated restaurant. They have seventy thousand followers on Instagram, while our recent videos and posts on our social media here have not garnered that kind of response. We have many, many comments about how much the community is looking forward to Batiste Koush and the Pastelaria opening here soon. So I'd like to ask if either Carlos or David would like to say a few words?
Good afternoon. I am not a resident of Gilroy, but I've been visiting Gilroy on a regular basis for the last thirty-six years. Our chef is a resident here, like Gary said, and we are really looking forward to opening Batiste Koush in downtown. Really excited, so. And I did bring a few goodies from our bakery, and I hope you'll enjoy them. Thank you so much, really looking forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, reports of council member and their committees. Councilmember Bracco?
Definitely report.
Councilmember Fugazi?
So from Visit Gilroy, celebrating a birth announcement today. It's not a boy, it's not a girl, it's a website, so if you haven't gone out to it, you're going to want to. It's more than just a website, though. It's a content management system and database. It amplifies Visit Gilroy's relationship with the community, makes it easier for visitors to book overnight stays. Gilroy's impressive inventory of tourism-worthy assets are on full display, including Gilroy Gardens, restaurants, recreation opportunities, wineries, cultural events, and much more. Great attention was given to ADA compliance, and we're proud to incorporate a translation widget that'll allow non-English-speaking friends to access the site. Websites are generally thought of as a place to access information, and our new web presence does much more, and asserts that Gilroy is a fantastic destination that'll inspire and engage as well as inform, so please go out and visit visitgilroy.com. Maybe you want to wait till the meeting's over. But more good news also, Visit Gilroy has applied for and has also been accepted to a Visit California Reverse Mexico mission. It's a competitive program, not all are accepted, and the executive director will travel to Oakland and meet with top travel organizations and journalists from Mexico, where he'll promote group travel, conferences, and travel. Mexico's economy has been growing, and travel from Mexico has been on the rise, so good things happening with Visit Gilroy.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. The, from Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, VTA is the congestion management agency for Santa Clara County. The U.S. one oh one State Route Twenty-Five Santa Teresa Boulevard Extension Project is expected to alleviate traffic that uses local city roads by providing direct connectivity to the U.S. one oh one State Route Twenty-Five interchange without having to connect to U.S. one oh one further north. By allowing local and other traffic in the areas to bypass this one oh one bottleneck and connect mostly, or to connect directly to U.S. one oh one State Route Twenty-Five interchange, the project is expected to reduce vehicle miles traveled and improve travel times and safety. The project will also provide new bike lanes along this roadway extension, thereby accommodating more direct connectivity for bicyclists in the area. The project needs an additional two point one million to leverage federal funding and complete the project approval environmental document phase. If the contract for that phase cannot be signed by March twenty-fifth, the project risks forfeiting two point four million in federal funds. Cost proposals for the document phase completion are significantly higher than the three million available, due to the project's location in an area where historic and Native American resources, significant environmental testing, including extensive cultural testing, excavation, and consultants with tribes, will be required. The VTA PAC recommended that the VTA Board of Directors augment the twenty sixteen Measure B program in the adopted fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, budget by seven hundred thousand from the highway interchanges category, appropriate and reallocate seven hundred thousand from the right-of-way phase to the project and for the U.S. one oh one Twenty-Five Santa Teresa Boulevard Extension, and program one point four million in vehicle registration fee, county-wide program funds to the state, to the U.S. one oh one State Route Santa Teresa Boulevard Extension Project. That was a mouthful, but just one of the things I really wanted to highlight in that last part, this direction will obviously go to the VTA Board next month, is just all the different variation of programs and tax dollars and vehicle registration fees that we have and how they come back here to Gilroy.
Councilmember Ramirez?
No report.
Councilmember Klein?
I want to piggyback Councilman Hilton and what he presented, being part of the mobility cl, oh shoot, I got to say it right, there's so many boards we're a part of. This is the Mobility Partnership Committee with the VTA. They are having workshops in March, and I just wanted to highlight those. They will be on the website and the newsletter, but they're having an open house March twelfth at Gablin College at six P.M. in the Student Center Lounge. And again, this is about the project that's happening between Monterey Road and Twenty-Five. In April, VTA, in collaboration with the Caltrans, will begin construction of a new U.S. one oh one and State Route Twenty-Five interchange slightly north of the current interchange. The new interchange will accommodate traffic demands due to rapid growth in commuter, commercial, and recreational traffic that passes through the area. So these meetings will be information that you can draw from to understand what exactly the impacts will be from this project. Also, March thirteenth, they'll have an open house at the Gilroy Library Community Room, again at six P.M., and then a virtual median, meeting on March twenty-sixth at six P.M. The Zoom link is on that. They have these flyers that you can download, both in English and Spanish, and the meetings will be both in English and Spanish. So just want to encourage you, if you've got questions about it, want to understand why they're going to close Castro Valley Road and Mesa Road, understand how the flow of traffic's going to be, and also the funding and how it gets paid for and the timing. Go to those meetings and you'll get more information, so thanks.
Thank you. And finally, myself, I will talk about one committee that I'm on. I'm on a committee up in the San Jose area. It's called, it's a Cities Association, the Legislative Action Committee, and this group of people is made up of every single city in Santa Clara County, most of them mayors, vice mayors, or council members. And while it's early, we just only had our very first meeting, while it's early, this committee, what they do is come together and think of local issues that we share in Santa Clara County, and then we work directly with our legislatures up in Sacramento. And so as I said, so far, it's early in the year, but I'm looking forward to having direct contact up with Sacramento and having a unified voice down here in Santa Clara, and even having a voice amongst the Santa Clara folks, being that we're so far down here in South Santa Clara County that I'm looking forward to providing a voice for South Santa Clara County, so stay tuned for further updates on that committee. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, it's the consent calendar. Are there any members of council that are interested in pulling any of the items on the consent calendar? So no items wish to be pulled, so we have, I'll entertain a motion on the consent, excuse me, I'm so sorry, public comment on the-
No public comment.
Thank you, sorry about that. I will entertain a motion of items eight point one through eight point eight.
A motion?
Okay, I have a-
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second of approval of item number eight point one through eight point eight of the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Moving on to item number nine, bids and proposals. There are none. Moving on to item ten, and item number ten point one. Consider the adoption of a resolution declaring the intent to transition from an at-large election system to a district-based election system pursuant to the California Elections Code, Sections one zero zero one zero, with the transition taking effect in time for the November twenty-sixth and twenty-eight elections. Do we have any, do we have any ex parte communications from council? And legal counsel, Andy, could you please explain what ex parte communications are for the public?
That means communications with members of the public, or, for example, in a zoning matter with developers or neighbors opposed to it, that were not, did not occur at a public meeting.
Thank you. So we have a staff presentation, it will be outside legal counsel today, but we'll be doing a presentation.
Yeah, I'll start off if I may.
Yeah, please.
Sure, thank you. This item was occasioned first by a letter that the city received, a certified letter in December, and that letter pursuant to state law sets off a chain of events in response to it, that cities have, and special districts have gone through. The letter alleges a violation of the California Voting Rights Act, which is similar but different from the Federal Voting Rights Act, and it claims that the city of Gilroy, in order to stay in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, must go to districts. Now, this is a highly technical area. It's something that's been happening to a number of cities in Santa Clara County recently. Morgan Hill, Campbell, Santa Clara, and Los Altos, for example, have all gone to districts because they have received similar letters that have invoked the provisions of the California Voting Rights Act. Because of the technical nature of this, we have brought in outside counsel, who is standing over there, Mr. Kimon Manolius, who is from the Hanson Bridget Law Firm, who has extensive experience. In fact, last year, he worked with the city of Los Altos on exactly this kind of project. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Manolius to explain how the process works, what the city's options are, what the California Voting Rights Act is, and in general elucidate for us the pros and cons of the possible adoption of this resolution that's in front of the council.
Thank you very much. Oops. Okay, good. While we're here, as the city attorney just told everyone, it's because the city has received a letter on December sixteenth of two thousand twenty-four, and the letter contained both an allegation and a demand. And the allegation is that there's a violation of the California Voting Rights Act, and the demand is, as the city attorney said, that the city convert from an at-large voting system to a district-based voting system. The Voting Rights Act was enacted in two thousand two. It was followed by a just amazing amount of litigation, where cities and special districts were getting sued for violating the act. There were many, many multimillion-dollar awards against cities and other public entities, so much so that in two thousand sixteen, the California Legislature passed a safe harbor provision for the act. In other words, to give cities or other public districts a chance to make the transition without getting sued, basically. And what drives that is, as the city attorney said, this letter. The letter then has a forty-five-day deadline, so the city would have forty-five days to make a decision as to whether it wanted to go to districts or not. There's been an extension of that deadline negotiated, because that deadline would have run at the end of January, and now it runs at the end of February, February twenty-eighth. And again, to comply with the letter, the city council would have to pass a resolution of intent to go to district-based elections. And just as an aside, an at-large election is what we have now in the city of Gilroy. So in other words, everyone votes for all the members of the city council who are on the ballot. A district-based system is one where the city's divided into districts, and there's one council person per district, and they're voted in that way as such. Okay, so let's talk about the elements of a CVR violation. I'll talk about some options and then a bit about the process and mechanics of districting. The Voting Rights Act prohibits at-large elections under, almost always, but under very few circumstances are at-large elections okay under the California Voting Rights Act. And an at-large system is based, is defined as any system that has any at-large component. So what the law really wants is a transition to district-based elections. So what the law really wants is a transition to district-based elections. The second element of a violation is racially polarized voting, and this is a very confusing element, and it tends to set off alarm bells. Racially polarized voting means that folks vote in a jurisdiction in a significantly, statistically significant correlation with their race or other ethnic background, more than other people do. So it's just more of a grouping of voters for candidates. It doesn't mean that anyone's racist, it doesn't mean that people are racist at all. What it means is people are voting a little bit more according to race than they do for other things. And if you think about it, that's not unusual, people vote for all sorts of reasons, right? I bet you there are correlations for gender, for socioeconomic condition, for religion, anything you can name. But the legislature has outlawed racially polarized voting by race, right? So that's what the legislature is really concerned with. And then finally, there needs to be some notion of vote dissolution. And vote dissolution is where people's votes get spread so thinly that they can't win, they can't elect a candidate of their choice. An example would be, there would be no dissolution if every ethnicity in the City of Gilroy was evenly spread throughout the entire jurisdiction, right? Because then, no matter how you broke it up, the percentages within each district would be the same. But that's not how life works, okay? And certainly not in the city here, or in any other city for that matter. People tend to be more concentrated in different places, and as soon as those concentrations come up, then if you vote all together at large, then you're making the voting power of minorities less, okay? And this is a very easy case to make, okay, unfortunately. I work with lots of demographers, as you might imagine, because that's what this is, we're going to ultimately draw maps, and the demographers have shared with me that of all the work they've done, there is racially polarized voting in maybe one or two jurisdictions that they've ever seen. And that's in California, that's in the United States of America, just the way it is, okay? People vote in a statistically more significant fashion by race than they do by other things. That's racially polarized voting, that is what the California Legislature has outlawed. That can lead to a violation of the act. So again, it's at-large racially polarized voting and some notion of, again, vote dissolution. And the only way you don't get vote dissolution, again, is if you have folks evenly spread throughout the jurisdiction, which is almost never the case. Okay, so the options, right, the options. The city can fight the claim, the city can transition to districts, and there may be some other options, but they're not very viable, and I'll go through those as well. Okay. Fighting the claim, a very tough lawsuit to win, as I just told you, the standard is low, the correlation for the race of voters is low, the dissolution is low, and you're already in an at-large jurisdiction. So it's a very, very difficult case to win, and it's a very expensive case to lose. It just does not require much of plaintiffs. Give you an example, like to litigate a case like this, it's a very expert-heavy case, it would cost the city a lot of money to hire somebody like me to defend it in this lawsuit. But the real whammy comes at the end of the lawsuit, because the CVRA, if one prevails, comes with attorney's fees. And the attorney's fees awards on these cases are astronomical, seven figures, easy. A couple have gotten into beyond that. There was great hope for a while that the California Supreme Court would come to the rescue, or clarify the law a little bit, maybe make it a little harder. There was a case called Pico Neighborhood Association versus City of Santa Monica, it's been going on for a decade. And when the decision finally came down in 2017, it didn't really do much to clarify what was going on, it just, it basically said, yeah, there's got to be some vote dissolution, but everyone already knew that. So basically, the law is as it is, many jurisdictions have tried to go to the legislature and ask for changes in the law, and those have not materialized. And, okay. But again, I want to stress that the attorney's fees part of this is the worst, because if you lose the case, you're going to pay a lot. And I mean, we're talking like four, five, six million dollars. I don't know, the Pico case, the City of Santa Monica case, has been going on a long time, lots of resources have been thrown at that. I shudder to think at what the attorney's fees award will be in that case, and that case was lost by the City of Santa Monica. But now they're back in the lower courts bouncing around a little bit. Okay, the second option is transitioning to districts. There are a couple of options here, you could go to seven districts for the City of Gilroy, or you could have six districts and retain your at-large mayor. There's a whole schedule that comes along with that, and it has to be done in 90 days. So it's a very quick turnaround for this process, and I'll talk a little bit more about the process in a minute. Other options, there are some other notions about other options, ranked choice voting, cumulative voting. There's been very, very little guidance from the legislature or the courts as to whether those go on to defeat a claim under the California Voting Rights Act. And basically, you're stuck with doing something and hoping, and that's not a good place to be. But recall that all systems that are not district-based are at-large systems under the act, so you're vulnerable, until you go to districts, you're vulnerable. Once you go to districts, you're done, you're no longer in trouble under the act at all. Okay, so the transition process, if indeed you do decide to pass a resolution of intent, you have to have five public hearings. The first two hearings are for public input to learn about the jurisdiction, so that you bring a demographer in, and they listen to the testimony from the public, from the council, talking about, oh, I think people like to be grouped over here by this school district, or I think this shopping center makes a lot of sense, or this neighborhood's very cohesive. That's known as communities of interest, and the hope of those two meetings is to get enough fodder for the demographer to really have a sense about the district and how to maybe divide it up. So again, the first two hearings are for the public interest, they have to be held within 30 days of the resolution of intent, so if the council passed the resolution of intent tonight, within 30 days, there would be two hearings, public hearings for that purpose. The next two public hearings, there are five total, the next two after the first two are for the purpose of drawing maps. And the demographer will go and sit down and think about everything, and use the sound demographic principles that they do, and all the testimony that has been heard, and come up with some draft maps. And the draft maps have to be, you know, they have to comply with the California Voting Rights Act, and also the federal act, so there's a lot of nuance there, but generally, the demographer will produce two, three, four maps, and bring them to the council to look. They'll be posted seven days in advance, so that everyone can see them, and then basically, the council will take public input on the maps, ask questions about the maps, and send the demographer back and say, no, we want to see maps that do this, or, you know, we want the district to be cut by X roadway, or whatever. And the demographer will play with that. The other thing is that the public can draw maps, either freehand, or there's a map drawing tool that you can do online and submit your maps to the demographer, and if they comply with state law and federal law, the demographer can then say, yeah, it's a good map, I'm going to present it to the council as well. So it's an iterative process. And again, there have to be two of those meetings, there could be 10. It's just until the council feels like they, sorry, seen a map that they're comfortable with and can choose. And then the last public hearing, number five, is to actually pick a map, and then, and also to choose the order of elections. As you know, the council members are staggered in their terms, they have four-year terms, but they don't all get elected in the same election. But you have to just choose which districts will go first, and you have to make that choice, and this is just such a classic lawyer thing, in the spirit of the California Voting Rights Act. And I think that would mean is to make it more possible for minority voters to elect candidates of their choice. That would be the best spirit statement I can make. But it can cut a couple ways, because as you know, the next election that's scheduled now is 2026, and then the one after that is 2028. You could also look at, well, how many folks are going to vote in 2026, how many folks vote in 2028? General elections have higher turnout, minority voters tend to come out higher in general elections, so you could be looking at it either as 2026 being the election of choice for some districts, or 2028 being the election of choice. But you'll have a decision to make there as well. I think, rather than go more deeply into the hearings, I would stop there and take any questions.
Sure. Any questions from council? Councilmember Fugazi?
First question to ask, cities that have been faced with this same situation, who have chosen to not go to districts and to go into the process of fighting it, how many of those have won statewide since this has been happening?
Zero.
Okay. And of those that fought it of similar size to us, and decided that they were going to deal with the process that way, about how much did they spend in fighting the lawsuit? Just in close numbers?
It's really hard for me to say.
A hundred million?
To fight it, no, I would say-
Ten million?
Certainly over one.
Five?
One to five. Yeah, I mean, different question, how much it costs to defend it versus what happens when you lose it, right?
Well, I mean, what I mean is at the end, because they all lost.
Right.
Okay, so they all had to pay their counsel and the other counsel, and everything to go along with it, so that total bill-
1.5 to 10.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I would like to thank, we all as council members and the mayor received a couple of emails, some phone calls, so thank you. I know we have several speakers, so thank you for participating in this. I have a couple of questions that I have been asked from residents, and rather than, you know, me just kind of answering, I felt that they perhaps would be helpful for those watching or here, to hear the questions and then the answers that you could provide, so if you'll bear with me. So you said that we got a letter that triggered this process. What triggered that letter?
That's difficult for me to say. I mean, I mean, there have been several hundred letters, both to cities and to other public entities. Again, either somebody contacts a plaintiff's counsel, or plaintiff's counsel has a list, it's really hard for me to say.
So we have, it was the Southwest Voter Registration Education Project-
Yes.
-that is this attorney's client.
Correct.
So is it fair to assume, then, that they were the impetus for triggering the letter?
Again, it's really hard for me to say.
And how specifically, and kind of in layman's terms, and you did answer some of this, was it determined that we are considered to have polarized voting? So, and I guess the reason that people are asking this question of me, which I am now asking of you, is what I'm hearing is, but we've had for decades Latinos on this dais. This may be the first time in decades that we haven't. So how then do they come up with this polarized voting?
Right. The, who actually wins is not dispositive, it's whether there's racially polarized voting, whether there's a correlation among voting and race. So it, while those are interesting facts, and you'd certainly present them in defense of a lawsuit, the heart of the matter is, at-large racially polarized voting, vote dissolution.
So when I answer that question to them, I say, it doesn't matter who is sitting on the dais representing the community, but the polarized voting that could be existing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's a mathematical-
Way beyond my ability to mathi-, yeah, I'm not a statistician.
And mine.
Okay. This is another question I got, if Gilroy's demographics show that there is a higher percentage of Latinos, why is it not considered polarizing for Caucasians?
If voting is polarized, it is polarized among all the races at once, so it just precludes minorities from being able to elect candidates of their choice, because there are too, there's too low a concentration anywhere at-large?
And I'm going to ask this differently, because you explained it to us previously-
Okay.
But because I was asked this by several people. There is a higher population of Latinos in Gilroy, they, so they're not the minorities. However, when we look at polarized voting, we don't look at every resident, we look only at those, and I might say this incorrectly, but those that are eligible to vote.
It's called CVAP, Citizens of Voting Age Population.
Thank you.
Yes.
And so in that case, the Latinos are the minority?
Yes, although, in a sense, it doesn't matter if there's racially polarized voting, it means that whatever percentage there are of Latinos, they're voting for one candidate more than another, right?
I see what you're saying, okay.
And same thing with non, you know, with white voters for the Seguarian, I guess that's the two biggest groups here. So it's just that they're voting in blocks, I mean, you can think of it like that, in blocks.
Okay.
And so it's not like, if one's a block, then the other's a block too?
Okay.
They have to block, you know, they have to correspond.
And then in regards to boundaries, when and if we get there, the concern is that these will be based on the 2020 census, is that correct?
That is correct.
And they will not be redefined until the 2030 census, and I know that there are just a lot of people that are concerned, because the city has grown exponentially between 2020 and now.
Right.
Or potentially the 26 or the 28. Okay.
Right.
So then it will set the boundaries now, but then the boundaries will be set again after the 2030 census report is available.
Correct. And by law, it has to be used, the 2020 census has to be used now.
Right.
Now, there are some annual updates that the demographer will look at, but again, when you're drawing districts, they have to be within 10% population of each other, and so there's a little bit of fudge there, as things are going to change anyway, it's almost baked into the process. But you can't do anything until 2030.
Right.
2031, I should say.
And that 10% is based on population or eligible voters?
CVAP.
CVAP.
Citizens of Voting Age Population.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I just have a couple more, thank you so much. So it's CVAP, so that one was answered. And my understanding is that there's something somewhere in the code that indicates that the attorney and his organization, if we choose to fight and we lose, that they set the boundaries.
Oh, I see. Well, if we were to go to court, if there was a lawsuit, and the court would entertain, it would be just like any other decision a court makes, but the plaintiffs would be saying, court, do it this way.
Okay.
And the city would be saying, no, do it this way.
Okay.
But you, I think the notion there is that the city loses control of the district drawing once it's in court, because the court's going to impose it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Hilton?
Can you clarify, or staff clarify, where the funds come from to defend a lawsuit?
I should probably defer to the city attorney.
Do you want that? Where the funds come from?
There's no answer to that, I mean, they're just city general funds, there's no special place that the city could get money to defend it from, it would come from monies that otherwise would be in the city budget for other purposes.
Additional questions from council? Yep, did you have any further comments?
Not unless there are questions.
Yeah. No, I think we'll move on to public comment. Okay, so thank you very much, thank you.
So we're opening a public hearing now, correct?
Yes. So now we'll move into public comment in the public hearing?
Correct. Our first speaker is Ron Kirkish, to be followed by Martha Martinez, and you will each have one minute.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, community. I'd like to thank you, sir, for doing a great job.
Speak closer, Ron.
My concern, but it looks like my concern is going to be wasted because of the situation that we are in. We don't have, as a city, we don't have- Is that better? No? No? Well, I'll try to speak up. This, to me, is a loss of our freedoms, our basic freedoms, that we are supposed to be a democracy, representative democracy, or representative republic, but we aren't. This takes the power out of our hands. Each one of you, when you vote on something, it impacts the whole city, including myself. But if you're not, well, if I'm not one of your constituents, you don't have to listen. That's what the problem to me is, that we have as a-
Thank you, Ron. Sorry, your minute went up already. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Martha Martinez to be followed by Armando Benavides.
Please excuse not having niceties to do introductions. I'm going to go right to it. Why move to district-based elections? There are benefits to the city of Gilroy. Enhanced representation leading to more localized and responsive governance. Increased diversity. District elections make it easier for candidates of diverse backgrounds to run for office, potentially leading to a council that will accurately reflect the community's demographics. Cost-effective campaigns. A campaign within their district, within a specific district rather than the entire city reduces the financial and logistical barriers for a candidate to enter a race. You heard about legal compliance. I'm not going to go there. I hope that's not the reason that you're making your decision today, to comply. That's a good reason, and it's certainly a reason, but I am glad that you received the letter and that you will look to make at-large election systems that are beneficial to enhance representation and inclusivity around our city. And this is my last statement. Moving to district-wide elections would restructure the electoral landscape, localizing representation, and potentially leading to a council that is more attuned to the diverse needs of every community that is represented in Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Armando Benavides.
May I ask you? Thank you, everybody. Let's try to keep the clapping down. It's a very long meeting and it just creates more time in between each speaker. So thank you very much for your enthusiasm. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I urge you to approve this district elections. District elections serve to ensure that every neighborhood has a dedicated representative, leading to more equitable representation. It will give voice to neighborhoods that may otherwise be marginalized or overlooked, ensuring that the city's diverse communities are heard in the decision-making process. By implementing district elections, you will create a system where candidates are more accountable to their specific neighborhoods, fostering stronger connections and better policy outcomes. It's a step towards inclusivity and fairness. Now, I took the time to look at the voting patterns of the city for the last 24 years and found that except for a few exceptions, those elected to serve in the council reside in the west side of town. District elections will ensure that areas that share a community of interest from the east side of towns have a representative serving on the council. Your support for district elections for Gilroy will be a step forward for a more accountable, responsive, and representative governance and potentially save the city significant litigation costs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Daniel Donovan to be followed by Jan Goffey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm here. First of all, my name is Daniel Donovan. My wife and I have been homeowners at 2611 Club Drive on the very far west side of town for over 24 years. I feel very well represented here today. One of the points I want to make is I would much prefer that my tax dollars go to providing city services as opposed to full employment for lawyers. I also want to see a better representation of all people within the city at this base. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, please.
Our next speaker is Jan Goffey to be followed by Kathy Napoli.
Hello, my name's Jan Goffey and I'm a five-year resident here, and I am very much in favor of district elections for city council for two reasons. One, district elections would offer our neighborhoods more representation. Right now, Sixth Street cuts across our city, many stop signs spewing carbon dioxide into the air of all the residents who live there. They might want their own representation from their area. The second reason is that city council district elections would allow more people to run for office, not being hampered by having to run a citywide campaign. Our city will benefit when all perspectives, life experiences, and talent are encouraged to lead us on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Our next speaker is Kathy Napoli to be followed by John Peralis, Sr.
Yes, my name is Kathy Chavez-Napoli, and I am a property owner in Morgan Hill. I own commercial property on the east side, and it is mixed-use, so it's commercial and residential. I think it's really important to have district elections so that you hear the unique problems of people who are business owners or commercial property owners that deal with residential, too. They are unique and they are challenging, so I support having district elections. But more importantly, as a trustee of Gavilan Community College, it does matter when you're represented. Every time an issue comes up, unless you know your neighborhood, unless you know their problems, then no one can advocate for you adequately. So it is critical to have representation that understands your community and your special needs. So I support district elections. Thank you. And I do appreciate you taking this on, so I'd like to use that money in the general fund for good services, and I don't want my property taxes to go up.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Our next speaker is John Peralis-
Thank you, John.
...to be followed by Sean Anen.
Good evening, Mayor Bozo, council. I was the catalyst for helping Gilroy Unified move to district elections, and I worked with them intimately in that work. It was part of my doctoral work, and I just wanted to put it to good use, and it's made an amazing difference. Now, I won't reiterate some of the topics that have been shared earlier, but I attended the budgeting workshop. And within that budgeting workshop, the ideas that council members were describing and talking about would fit perfectly into this new system. You could build better relationships, intimate relationships. You can gather with your districts, have a cookout, listen to what their needs are, be intimately in the know of their needs, their struggles, their successes. To me, that's a win-win. That is easy. That makes your job easier, I believe. So I urge you to please move forward with adopting district elections. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Sean.
Is Sean Anen to be followed by Zane Yah? Yah?
Yahah.
Yahah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. My name is Sean Allen. I'm the president of the Santa Clar- Silicon Valley NAACP, and we support the redistricting. It's very critical that our community continues to reflect everyone, and the majority of people in this county are actually people of color, and that's not reflective here today, although I respect those who are in these positions. It's important that we have a wide lens of people looking at our problems throughout our community and our county, and that's not happening when it comes, when you're excluding different groups. This county has about 1,800 people, 1,800 children in the social services system, and it's 65% Hispanic and 35% Black, and that's not reflective of the population. So that reflects on the decision-makers in this county. Our children are most important regardless of what their race is, and they need that representation from every single group, not just one group. And it's not, again, it's not a racist statement. It's a statement saying we need to be more inclusive and look at things from an inclusive nature. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean.
Our next speaker is Zane to be followed by Adrian Ortiz.
Hi, council, and thank you for your time. My name is Zane and I am a local business owner. I wanted to speak today in support of districting. Districting is an opportunity to ensure that our maps reflect the diverse voices of our community. District voting will strengthen our democracy by facilitating greater participation by all eligible voters. I hope that our city can move in the direction of a more fair and equitable election process. I also just want to add that, in my humble opinion, going to ranked choice voting might be like preempting the next step so you don't face another lawsuit 20 years from now. So just think about that one.
Thank you, Zane.
Our next speaker is Adrian Ortiz to be followed by Joseph Robinson.
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Adrian. I'm here to ask you to consider the Latino population when making decisions about redistricting our city. I want to acknowledge the Latino community is the largest racial demographic group of Gilroy, nearly nearing 60%. When districts are drawn, it's important to make sure that Latino neighborhoods are not overlooked by creating districts that reflect where Latino families live. We help ensure that specific needs, whether it's in education, healthcare, or public services, are properly addressed. Everyone deserves a seat at the table. The Latino community is a vital part of our city's economy, culture, and future. By making sure they are properly represented, districting are making sure our city is stronger, more inclusive, and better for everyone. And I'm in favor of district elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Our next speaker is Joseph Robinson to be followed by Carolina Perez.
Okay, so, hello, mayor, hello, council. So it should be, you know, another way to look at this is that there's a plausible deniability here where we're not supposed to know what party the individual council members and mayor belong to. You know, there used to be a little red pill that you could chew on and it would highlight the plaque so you knew where to brush. And if we were to do that, we would know we have four very right-wing Republicans on council who are giddy in their hostility to multiculturalism and to diversity. And so that, since we're all adults here, we might as well say that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolina Perez to be followed by Diana Madrid.
Hola, buenas noches. My name is Carolina Perez. I'm center director for Digital Nest, and I'm here to solve a couple of your problems and to make your life better. So what we do at Digital Nest, you know, I want to see if I can add value to the Gilroy Unified District. What we do is we prepare, explore, and lounge, and I just want to share some of the really good stories from our interns. They're going to be leaving, one of them got a job in Texas as a software engineer. Another one is going to become a software developer at GoFundMe. And another really cool intern landed a job with Mark Roberts from Crunch Labs. And another one just is going to go to Adobe. So those are just the opportunities that we are working here in Gilroy, and I need your support and the Gilroy Unified, just to keep a bright future for our youth. Thank you. Gracias.
Our next speaker is Diana Madrid to be followed by Jessica Pineda.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Diana, and I wanted to take a moment to say how upset it makes me-
Can you speak a little closer, Diana? Thank you.
That there isn't enough Latino representation on the Gilroy City Council. I live on the east side of Gilroy where the majority of people are Latino, just like me. A lot of us on this side are blue-collar families, hard-working renters, homeowners, and voters who deserve to have someone representing us in the council. I really wish our city could split into districts so that there could be someone who actually lives on the east side, someone who understands our community and can speak up for the struggles and needs of Latino families. We need a voice that will always keep us in mind when decisions are being made for the city. Thank you for hearing me out.
Great job, Diana. Good job.
Our next speaker is Jessica Pineda to be followed by Soray Rodriguez.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I am here today to say I am in favor of the district elections, and I would like to say that I believe this city needs to be districted so that the people can choose who truly represents them. And I would like to see a Latino leader, or Latina even, who understands our struggles, and I would like this so people will feel heard and valued, especially in these hard times. And my community and I deserve better Latino representation, and we need better voting system that makes sure every Latino vote, including mine, is counted and represented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Soray Rodriguez, followed by Brian Garcia.
Hello, mayor and city council members. My name is Ari and I'm a Chicana, high school student, daughter, and hard-working Latino parent and proud Gilroy resident. I'm here today because I can't believe that with everything happening in our country right now, especially with the new administration, I feel unsafe in my own city. It's crazy to think about it. I'm scared, honestly. Who's going to represent me and my community? Who's going to make sure that students like me are safe and heard? Who's going to fight for us so we can thrive, graduate high school, go to college, and break all the stereotypes about our Latino community? It breaks my heart that data shows students from east side Gilroy are less likely to graduate, more likely to get expelled, and less likely to persuade higher education or career. That needs to change, so I'm asking the city council to include more Latino representation, especially someone who lives on the east side and knows what families go through every day. Although I might not live on the east side, most of my close friends do, and I'm here speaking up for them because their voice matters. I really hope we can start looking at districting so that all communities get the representation they deserve. It's not enough for our voices just to be written down tonight. We need real change. We can make Gilroy better if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Our next speaker is Brian Garcia to be followed by Gary Walton.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Brian Garcia, and I'm a proud resident of Gilroy. I'm here to speak about the need for creating districts in our town.
Lift the mic up closer so everyone can hear you.
As a young person living here, I've noticed that the majority of our current council members live in the same area of the city, which doesn't fairly represent the diverse needs of our entire community. Gilroy's population is more than half of Latino, but our community, but our city council is mostly non-Latino. This creates a feeling of underrepresentation, especially among youth and Latino families like mine, who make up a significant portion of our town. Creating districts would give different parts of Gilroy a voice in our government. It's important that the council reflects the diversity of our city so everyone, especially youth and Latino families, feel heard and represented. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider creating districts for a fairer and more inclusive Gilroy.
Great job. Gary, next?
Gary to be followed by Sally Casas.
Is Gary here? I think Gary's gone, so we'll move on to Sally.
Sally Casas, and then our final speaker will be Lorena Tariba.
Good evening. My name is Sally Casas and council members. I'm kind of shocked that Gilroy is still working against the California Elections Code 10010. And so I feel that the adoption of the district-based election system to take effect in the time for November 2026 and 2028 elections is paramount. The district-based elections enable candidates to represent their specific neighborhoods and constituents to effectively serve as a council member. Candidates will also have an equal economic opportunity to run for office. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Our final speaker is Lorena.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Lorena Tariba, and I was just elected this November to the Gavilan College Board, representing Area Four. As a teacher and retired school administrator of modest means, I was surprised how much fundraising and resource gathering I had to do just to represent my area to run for Gavilan. And I know that this is a big obstacle for people of diverse means and diverse backgrounds in our community in running. We have a crisis of people not running for not just city council, but also for school boards in this community. So considering the district elections is the right way to go, to open the door for democracy for people who cannot afford tremendous amounts of money to go into campaigns.
Thank you very much, Lorena. Any further speakers? Okay, I'll bring you back to council. Any questions, comments from council? Councilmember Fugazi.
So, wow, this is a, it's a tough one. I can tell you from some perspectives, I absolutely can see and validate the needs, and in others, it's actually kind of hard personally to hear from people. and in others, it's actually kind of hard personally to hear from people. I'll kind of elaborate. First of all, in terms of districts representing geographically, there's certainly some merit to that and certainly some merit to the cost of running for an election. I know that personally. Whether or not this is going to end up making a better system for everybody, I don't exactly know if that's going to be the outcome that you desire just because of the way the entire system works in terms of how people vote and, and everything around it. But the thing that does kind of hurt me a little bit is when I hear that because of my skin color, I'm not going to be able to represent. And it is maybe unknown to some of you, but other than myself, I'm pretty much the only white guy in my family living right now. The rest of my family are all Latinos or Koreans, or you can go down the list. So I am one-third of my own family at home who is Caucasian, and so I've spent the last forty years of my life living in a community of Latinos in my family. And, and so it hurts a little bit to hear that, even though some of your other concerns, I think, are valid. In terms of the city, I'm up here to represent the city and the people of all of the city. And this is an economic decision for me and a strategic decision for me, which isn't about whether or not I think it's going to be, you know, it's going to have efficacy or it's right or anything else. It's simply, it's a poker game where you've got, you've thrown twenty-five bucks in the pot, somebody calls you and basically says, "I'm going all in. You got a pair of queens? What are you going to do? I'm not going to sit there for that pot." So it's not, it's not something I think that we, that we can fiscally entertain as a city to go up against on this, this losing battle. So that's where I sit on this.
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'm really torn because I look at Gilroy Unified School District, and they did not run a race. They had one person in every single district, and no one else came out, even knowing that the expense was a lot less. When I sit here and I listen to that there's no representation from the east side, you had a candidate running from the east side, and when, just for the heck of it, some of us looked at the precinct voting list after the election. Councilmember Hilton and Councilmember Fugazi were number one and number two on the east side from the precincts. So I'm sitting here saying, thinking, "You're blaming all of us for being white, being up here, but you didn't support your own candidate on the east side." Whether you agree or not, nope, nope. Whether you agree or not, that's what I heard when you came up. You're talking about having districts, and I certainly would hope to see that in every single district, we have a race and not just one person running. I'm really torn when I hear about the fiscal cost to the city. I don't want to see our general fund spending money on attorney fees when we need to use that money elsewhere. So it looks like we are going to go districts, from the feel I'm getting. Make it a race, get involved, and let's see a lot of candidates.
Additional questions or comments? Councilmember Hilton.
I'll put out one. So I'm for district elections. I'm for this process tonight. I'd be more than happy to make, make the motion if no one, if no one else has any further comments, but what I really want to do is, is also try to create a process where we can show, you know, through the budget process and the community, also providing input, and those appear in the dais as we go through our strategic planning and budget process, on, on setting like a template for each of our offices, on communicating with the public, like letting them know who your council member is, how to get involved, where the council meetings are, when they are, maybe what our, you know, social media is for the city. Maybe the city can use that opportunity to do more civic engagement so we can have this room, which should be more filled tonight, and, and beyond. I want to try to gather that feedback over the next few months because I think it is something, I don't want to see us make a decision and then just, you know, sort of like close the door and be like, "All right, let's see if that works." I want to play an active role in making it work, setting an example for how the city can provide those constituent services, how we can provide those constituent services, and maybe we can pass that information on to, you know, to make Gilroy Unified School District Board have more races, or Gavilan College have more, more races. So I look forward to working with all of you and for the publics, you know, I want to get as many ideas as we can to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Hilton, but it's something we need to do all year round, not just a couple months before the election. And try to get, educate the public on what it's, what it is to be in public service and, and try to better your community so that we can get more people to run. You know, it, it doesn't benefit anybody if nobody's running for office.
I agree.
Councilmember Ramirez.
So I just want to clarify something publicly so that there is no misunderstanding when we, if we choose to go in this direction, that if we go to districting, the districting elections will start in either '26 or '28. But if they do start in '26, anyone that is still, you know, every, every council member and the mayor will finish their term. So I don't want there to be, by the public, thinking that we've somehow manipulated this so that we've allowed people to finish out their terms. The law, if I'm correct, Andy, states that if you go to districts, whoever is sitting in office finishes out their terms. We are not manipulating that system.
Yes, that's, that's correct. And I'll, I asked Mr. Manolio if I'm wrong, but yes, you, all council members will finish their four-year terms, but we will start with the 2026 elections, however.
Okay.
We have to do that.
Okay.
If we go that way.
And I do want to say, you know, I sit up here, this is my first term, and I wasn't sure what I was getting into because I had been coming to council meetings for over a year. And I will say, and I think that this was evident after, especially after our last, our strategic planning, I feel that this body of elected officials is very much cognizant of representing the entire community. We are open to comments, we are open to meetings, we are open to phone calls, we are open to emails. If you feel that we are not representing you in some way, you know how to reach us. And I, I do believe that everyone sitting at this dais feels very strongly about representing the entire community and what is, and doing what is best for the community as a whole. And I'm really proud to be a part of this elected body.
Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Knowing this process was coming at us, you know, we have to check our, our own motives at the door and look at it citywide, how it impacts and the benefits. I appreciate those who spoke tonight, you know, sharing where you're coming from. The young, young men and young women getting up there, it's hard, and so I appreciate that and you coming up and sharing. And I'm going to focus on, like Councilmember Hilton said, as far as, and even Councilmember Bracco, about helping the process to be more sustainable so that we get the candidates to run in, in a timely fashion. It is hard. I admit that. So I have to check myself at the door and be part of this process as we go forward. And I realize, getting on this dais, you realize how much lack of control we really have at, at the city level. And so it's a fight to hold on to that control. But there are changes, there are processes we have to make adjustments to, and this is one of those things. And so I think collectively, we will work at that over these next ninety, whatever days it's going to be, and get this done. And so I look forward to that process. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton.
Yeah, I'll make a adoption, a motion would be adoption of a resolution declaring an intent to transition from an at-large election system to a district-based election system pursuant to California Elections Code Section 1010.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand and ten, with the transition taking effect in time for the November 2026 and 2028 elections.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilmember Fugazi. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. We'll take a quick five-minute break. Quick five-minute break, and we'll come back to 10.2. Okay, we're going to continue on. Thank you for allowing us to have a quick break. And now we are moving on to item 10.2. Introduction of an Ordinance Approving a Zoning Map Amendment Application to Rezone an Undeveloped Property. APN Number 81023005 to Residential Hillside, consistent with the 2040 General Plan Hillside Residential Land Use Designation Z2203, and adopt a resolution approving a tentative map application to subdivide an approximately 37.54 acre site into fifty-four single-family residential lots. Do we have any ex parte communications? Any, anybody?
Yes.
Yes.
I met with Amanda, Hannah Burnettti, and Mike Davis, the consultant, a couple of times, plus I spoke with Mr. Davis on the phone.
Councilmember Ramirez?
I met with both of them.
Likewise.
Same with myself. Okay. Sorry, staff presentation, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Representatives of the Ren Fu Villa Residential Project are here before you this evening for consideration of a zoning map amendment and a tentative map application on their property that is located off of Miller Avenue. So to orient you, this is the site in blue. It is between San Tito's, Teresa Boulevard and Miller Avenue. The Glen Loma Ranch specific plan development is to the north. Portions of Eagle Ridge are to the west and to the south, and the Presbyterian Church property is located to the east of this site. The City Council did consider this project, this site, as part of the Gilroy 2020 General Plan adoption, as well as the General Plan Land Use Map that was adopted along with that. And in that consideration, the City Council changed the land use designation of the site from Rural Residential to Hillside Residential. And the reason it went to Hillside Residential was due to the steep slope of the site, to the surrounding land use designation, which was also Hillside Residential, and to the riparian characteristics of this site. In changing that land use designation, the property was allowed to have, to develop at a density of less than one to up to four dwelling units per net acre. So the zoning map amendment before you this evening would change the zoning of the site from A1, which is agricultural, to Residential Hillside, RH. And by doing that, the property would then become consistent with the general plan land use designation for the site, as well as general plan goals and policies, and would also implement the zoning code. And just as a side note, this, whether this project came before you tonight or not, this site would have been rezoned as part of the citywide rezoning that is going to occur when we adopt the new zoning code. So that is the first application. The second application is a tentative map, and the tentative map is application TM2402, and this would subdivide this 37.5 acre site into fifty-four lots. It would be in two phases, but a portion of the property, the central portion here, is going to be preserved as open space because it is a large riparian area, and Bax Creek does run through it, so it's not developable. It will be maintained as permanent open space and will be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. That represents about forty-seven percent of the site, and it's about seventeen point seven acres. So the two phases of the site are split into Phase One, which is on the east side, and this is forty lots. They will range in size from about sixty-six hundred square feet to about twelve thousand square feet. They are all single-family lots, and they will be accessed by private streets that will be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. And then the second phase is on the east side of the property. It's fourteen lots. There will be three, sorry, on the west side of the property. The southwest portion will contain, contain three lots, and the northwest portion will contain eleven lots. And those will range in size from about eighty-nine hundred square feet to about sixty-one thousand square feet. These lots will also be served by private streets maintained and owned by the Homeowners Association. There will be new sidewalks constructed along Miller Avenue, as well as along the private streets in this subdivision. The property has been designed to minimize the use of sound walls. The only location where there will be sound walls is along Lots 33 and Lots 34. Future applications for this project will include architectural and site reviews for the individual homes that will go on these, these single-family lots. And then also, there is a proposed clubhouse. It's a, would be a private clubhouse for use only by the residents. This would be approved through a conditional use permit or through a planned due to development process. As part of this project review, staff did review the application to determine its consistency with the general plan, the 2040 General Plan EIR, and we did determine that the proposed land use density and onsite development is consistent with that document. And so we prepared a project-specific initial study and mitigated, mitigated negative declaration that identified impacts related to biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas, and vehicle miles traveled, hazards and hazardous materials, and transportation. I do have a representative from the city's consulting firm, David J. Powers and Associates here, who can answer any technical questions related to that document. One thing I do want to note is that because of the impacts to vehicle miles traveled, the applicant did agree to construct a sidewalk. It will be on the east side of Miller Avenue, and it will connect the southern frontage of this property to San Justo. And so that is going to significantly reduce the vehicle miles traveled. We're hoping that it will reduce it enough so that there will be no impact in that area. Let's see here. So tentative maps are processed a little bit differently from other entitlement applications. The City Council would need to approve the tentative map unless it can make one of the following findings: that the map is subject to severe flood hazard or severe inundation; that it's not consistent with the general plan; that it's not physically suitable for the type of development and the proposed density of development; that it's likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially avoidably injure fish or wildlife or their habitat; that it's likely to cause serious public health problems; or that it will conflict with easements acquired by the public at large for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision. Staff has not been able to make any of these findings, and therefore will be recommending approval tonight. I just want to talk a little bit about the public noticing that we've done for this project. On July 29th and August 1st, staff sent a, published a notice of intent to adopt the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. On December 23rd and 26th, staff sent notices to property owners within five hundred feet of this project site to notify them of the January 16th Planning Commission public hearing. And we also published a notice in the Gilroy Dispatch on January 3rd, 2025, for that same hearing. For the hearing tonight, we sent notices to property owners within five hundred feet on January 31st and also published an ad in the Gilroy Dispatch on that same date. In addition, the property has been posted with two onsite four-by-eight-foot billboard signs notifying passersby of the pending development. So at this time, we are recommending adoption by resolution of the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Ren Fu Villa Residential Project dated January 2025, a motion to read the ordinance by title only and way further reading, and introduction, to introduce an ordinance of the City Council approving zoning amendment application Z2203 to designate a 37.5 acre site from agricultural A1 zone to residential hillside RH zone, consistent with the 2040 general plan, and to adopt a resolution approving tentative map application TM2202 to subdivide the par- tentative map application TM2202 to subdivide the property into 54 single-family residential lots. And I do have our environmental consulting team here, and I also have the project applicant who does want to give a presentation. And I can answer any questions you have.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ramirez.
I just, thank you. Very clear. I liked your presentation. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. So the clubhouse is not available for the entire project. Is that correct?
I believe it's available for the entire project, although I would actually have to, oh, it's not, okay. I was going to say, I have to have the applicant verify that.
So it's just for the one side of?
Yes.
And the HOA fees, are they going to be the same for both phase one and phase two, or will those be dependent on whether you live in phase one and have access to the clubhouse or not, or?
That's a very good question that I'll have to defer to the applicant on.
Okay. And then the sidewalks, are there going to be sidewalks with curbs on the east side of the project, or are they going to, is it going to be like a walkway where the trees remain?
There's, it's going to be a separated sidewalk on a portion of the project. And that has to do with the fact that there's a riparian area, and there's a slope differentiation, so it's going to have to be separated in a portion of it. But there will be curbs on Miller. Correct?
The whole, throughout the whole project, or just part of it?
I'm going to defer to the engineer for that.
Go ahead.
Obviously, with the negative declaration, it's pretty much a given, but if we did not approve the zoning, then the other would be moot. Isn't that correct, at least for now?
If you did not approve the zoning, then you would not be able to approve the tentative map at this time.
Correct. Okay.
Additional questions? Okay.
Okay.
Further presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, Melissa. It's good to have Melissa back. My name is Amanda Musi-Birdell with Hannah Burnettti, and this is Michael Davis with DZ Land Management together. We're representing Mr. Ren and the Ren Fu Villas. Just on a little side note, a couple of the members of the family are in the audience. The Ren Fu Villas is a 54-lot subdivision, as Melissa stated. It's a 40-lot tract homes with 14-lot custom home with a private clubhouse for the members of the 14 custom home lots. Melissa kind of stole a lot of my thunder. This is the existing development of this, this is the existing site of 37 and a half acres. Bab's Creek runs through the property with a creek, the pond, and the riparian corridor. All of that will be retained onsite. The site's surrounded by Glen Loma and the Presbyterian Church, like Melissa stated. It will be done in two phases, with the right side being phase one, the 40-lot tract homes, and phase two would be on the other side of the pond, which would consist of 14 lots that will be developed and become the homes of Mr. Ren and his children. That would also include the private clubhouse that will be a gathering spot for the family. Clubhouse is kind of a, I don't know, a hard term. There isn't really a term for it, but it's more a gathering spot for the family because it's quite large. This is putting the development into a Google Earth image to kind of, to show how we mimicked the existing development. When, on the tract home side, we have Eagle Ridge to the south and Glen Loma to the north, where it's already single-family tract homes. We have the tract homes there. On the left-hand side of the site, where the development is not as dense, that's where we have the largest lots, the open space. And then as you move north towards Glen Loma, that's where the tract homes, or, sorry, the custom lots are, their larger custom lots are. So kind of mimicking the development and blending it from one side to the other. And I'm going to hand it to Mike, and I will answer your questions after that.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for your time and meeting us as well. As Amanda said, Melissa took all of our thunder basically away. But looking at this picture here gives you a really good idea about what this project is in relationship to Glen Loma that's to the north, Eagle Ridge that's to the south. Thank you, Amanda. And, and the density that we have out of 37 and a half acres, 17 and a half acres or 40% of this plus are, are open space. As you see those green areas, that's riparian habitat that you see right now, 11.7 acres. And then on top of that, we've added another 5.8 acres of open space to give us more open space. The great thing about this and walking the property and walking along Miller, taking our life in our hands with the, with the roadway and whatnot, I was able to see the turkey family going across the street. The great thing about where our open space and riparian habitat is, it's a connector to across the street, or that's what's to the, the south of this project. So the turkeys, the deer, everything have access to that creek, have access to that pond, and all the way into the project. And you can see how it separates the production-type houses, those 40 houses that are over to the right side of the screen, the 11 lots that are closest to the north and what's across the street from Glen Loma, and then the three lots that are down at the bottom and closer to the entrance to Eagle Ridge. So the clustered development that we have here has given us that 17 and a half acres of a swath going right through the middle of this project and that lake that's there as well. We did have a neighborhood outreach. We had 16 or 17 emails that the city forwarded to us that we were responding to and whatnot. We reached out and had a Zoom meeting. Unfortunately, we only had four people attend that. But some of the questions that came up is, you know, what are we looking at from mostly Glen Loma and looking toward the south? Well, the reality is, we don't see a whole lot of those production-type houses because of all of that green that's above the production houses to the north of them, all those existing trees. You see very few of those production houses. A comment came up in terms of our sound wall. It's about 300 feet and only covers the two lots, so the furthest two, that would be the northeast corner. So it's only about 300 feet of sound wall, not all the way across the property at all. It's just part of that area. And then the open, more open areas that are to the west of that, there's only 11 lots there. You can kind of see, as you look up the pager, all that denseness of Glen Loma. We only have 11 lots going across that, to where they'd look across. We do have additional trees for our landscape plan and whatnot, and then the three, the owner's lots, if you will, are the parents. The three are at the bottom corner. This is kind of our sound wall in our emergency gate. We have one gate, all the accesses to the development are off of Miller, but we have one emergency gate that the fire department required us to have, and it's a nice gate there in the middle of that sound wall, so that breaks it up, and you can see the landscape buffers that we have there as well. And real quick, there was, there was a comment on the sidewalks. Wanted to just touch on that. We're required to connect to the subdivisions to the east and across the property of the Presbyterian Church, those two vacant lots, and across our production-type homes. Across our production-type homes, that is curb and gutter. But then as the street goes up and the lot stays lower, we're going to have more of meandering six-foot-wide asphalt path that goes through there. There'd be no curb and gutter on that, and it's inside the property. That is open to the public. It's a half of a mile, so in terms of bike riding and access to get to the roundabout and connecting all the way down, and it was mentioned to me, all the way to Gavlin, basically, on sidewalks. Now, we're providing that and hopefully helping out with other things too, but that gives us walking, and nobody has to walk on Miller anymore, and of course, the bike riders and whatnot. And just a benefit to the whole community instead of just other items that might just be for the, the people in the development. Clubhouse, as we mentioned, it's only for the, for the owners of the project and their families on the one side, and the HOA to be determined is what the fees are, if they're going to be separate for both of those or not. And we're here for questions at all.
Are both phases, are either phases gated? Or are they both open to public so people can go walk through the neighborhood, both neighborhoods?
Well, they're private streets, but there's no gates in those private streets.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you for, you know, this is a long process to get here, I understand that, right? All the environmental work, you know, getting our general plan.
File right there?
Yeah.
Is, is the thickness of those reports.
Public input and really implementing our general plan and zoning codes and all that kind of stuff. You know, especially, this is one of the first projects that's able to really kind of go even further, right? No connections to natural gas. You actually have a, you know, transportation demand management program. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the, the public amenities, and especially the connection into south of the Presbyterian, down into that neighborhood. That's huge. That really sets us up to where these people aren't sort of like on this like weird island and all that kind of stuff. So my one question would be, is with the past two developments we've done over the last couple of years, Current Cottages and Royal Townways, one of the Royal Townhomes, one of the ways that we were able to even further reduce their vehicle miles traveled as a condition is to, for the developer to provide a $100 clipper card for the residents of the home when they purchase it. That will also further our general plan by implementing, like giving transit passes and that kind of stuff. So it's a past practice from others. It, obviously, we don't have our own VMT policy yet, so you guys are just putting in stuff that, you know, either VTA says or, or pass things, or you see from the general plan. So that would be my, my question, if the applicant would be willing to do that.
I mean, we're not going to die our sword for that, but I, I think the nearest bus stop from here is quite a ways away. So I, if it's, if it's practical, you know, if the council thinks that it is a benefit to this community that we're creating, then, then go for it. But the cost of putting in sidewalks along our frontage and connecting through, I mean, we have to get right-of-way's and all that stuff to connect that sideways through, I think we're doing our fair share, but if you feel like we need to do more, that's, that's at your.
Yeah, and it's not just for the bus stop that's, that's down on the corner of Thomas Road that's a half mile away. It's not just for that, but it's also, we're trying to encourage Caltrain usage. We have four trains that go north, so anything we can do to encourage even people from considering on not driving on the 101 freeway, right?
What about working in Gilroy?
Working in Gilroy, encouraging them to, you know, to use Caltrain. You know, Current Cottage already has theirs open, and this is a perfect way for, you know, for the city to be able to engage about the programs that we have, and even, even going further and having our partners like Caltrain and VTA actually come into their HOA meetings and talking to them about, about the transit options that we have here. Those are the, those are the future benefits that, that I think in my head about it as well.
Yeah, and fair point. I don't know if you've gone through a VTM or VD, all the acronyms are catching me up. VDM plan?
VMT.
No, 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 the plan that you come up.
TDM?
TDM. Yes, TDM. Have you ever gone through one of those plans?
Yes.
Yes, they're very extensive.
Yes.
And if we meet our points, we're done. I mean, it's a lot. It's, it's a lot, a lot. And to add a condition on top of that is, is even more. I mean, so, I mean, if you've, the ones that we've worked on, not in Gilroy, it's new to Gilroy, but in San Jose, I mean, we're providing charging stations for the scooters. We're, we're providing extra parking in the sites. There's, there's a lot of stuff that you do have to provide if, if you want to add that on top of. I would, I would offer up, if we're not meeting all the points that we need to meet, then that will be our first thing that we choose, but I don't want a condition of approval because I feel like this project is going above and beyond. I mean, I'm, if you know me, I'm not here advocating for something. I feel like I truly, truly believe that this project is going above and beyond what they needed to do.
And, and I can agree with you because this, if someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is actually the first residential project, and it's super far away from our downtown core, that actually has a TDM in it. We don't, there's no other ones that have it. So I, that's what I'm saying. I appreciate how far they, that you all have come and brought us here, and it's, we're not just picking stuff out of the blue. We are implementing our general plan and the policies that are inside there, and we're being good stewards of the environment. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Any traffic studies that were done on this, did they take into the consideration Castro Valley Road and Mesa Road being closed, and also the fact that the roundabout and other widening that was supposed to happen from Glen Loma is no longer going to happen?
We'd like to have the consultant respond to that question. The environmental consultant.
What's that?
Oh, we'd like to have the environmental consultant respond to that question.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Nick Toestopiet. I'm a project manager with David J. Powers and Associates, and we help the city with the sequodocument for the project. In terms of traffic studies that were done, there was a transportation analysis that was prepared that looked at several different facets to the transportation, impacts of the project. Specific to, I think, your question, there were only three intersections that were analyzed. That was Miller and Santa Teresa, Thomas and Santa Teresa, and then Thomas and Mesa. So we looked at level of service impacts to those three intersections and found that there weren't going to be any level of service impacts that would be, you know, impacting the, the transportation network around it, but I'm not sure if that specifically evaluated those roadway improvements that you mentioned.
Yeah, because the numbers that you might have used to make those assertions came probably from before the knowledge of them closing down Castro Valley Road, closing down Mesa Road, and then also us not having the widening in the traffic circle and bridge and whatnot work that we've put aside because of the Glen Loma. So they, they wouldn't exactly be representative of what our new reality is, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, there were trip counts that were collected in, I believe it was October of 2023, so if the conditions changed after that, then those wouldn't necessarily be reflected in the analysis that we provided.
Additional questions? I have one question. I'm a little unclear on the sidewalks that you guys talked about. On the picture that you showed, the sidewalk symbol in the yellow line, does it end at your development? Or can you be more specific for all of us in the audience, how far it goes?
So the, which is really hard to see on this, we have to put it in from the residential...
Get closer.
I can hear myself fine.
Nobody can hear you.
From the development that's to the east, that residential development, then there's a vacant lot, we have to go, and we have to connect to that sidewalk, continue across the vacant lot, across the Presbyterian Church, across the next vacant lot to touch our project. And that's where curb and gutter will be on those production houses that are further to the east on this picture. Then that yellow line, if you can see it, that goes through the green and where that lake is, that goes inside our property line a little bit, if you will, and follows it around. It's lower than the roadway there. There's a lot of trees there that we do not want to remove. It'll be inside, so to speak. That's open to the public. Past that or inside the property from that, that would be private. And it goes across those three lots in that court, and then as comes down around, around that culvert where the animals and turkeys and deer come across, we will have to come back up to Miller for just that length of, so to speak, culvert area, and then dives back down into the property again as it comes up along that west side. So that's that half mile coming across the frontage of our property and up to the traffic circle where that sidewalk is there.
Okay, so now I am confused. I thought I was very understanding, but, so I get the sidewalk part. It basically starts where the houses are, and it goes all the way past the Presbyterian Church to that next development where they've left off their side.
Correct, where it stops and ends.
Then the six-foot pathway that you're speaking of, I thought that that was going to be accessible all the way to the roundabout. But you're saying it goes through private property?
Well, it goes inside the private property, but it's going to be open to the public.
Oh, okay. That's all I need to know.
We are not preventing, that's for all the public, walkers, bicyclists, and the like.
Thank you.
But the curb and gutter that you mentioned earlier, councilmember, that's across our frontage where the production homes are, where it's more level with the street.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Okay. So I'll consider some public comment? Yeah, open public comment? Are there any?
No public speakers.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close public hearing. Any further, last chance for questions or comments? If not, then we're going to entertain a motion and, you have further comments? Yeah.
Yeah. Back in the 60s, me and my friends used to ride our bikes to that pond, and Mrs. Thomas that owned all that property, she lived across the street there, and you'd go and give her a quarter, and you got to go fishing, and with, for that quarter, she would bring you a sandwich and a soda and a cookie while you were down there fishing. So that's my comment.
So that's my comment.
On my, on my very first meeting, I talked about Councilman Bracco being able to provide historical perspective. There you go. So we have a four-step motion process here. I'm going to get a little help from the city attorney before I entertain a motion. Would you like to explain?
Well, I think, just do them one at a time. In other words, a motion to adopt the mitigated negative deck would be the first thing, and we'll take them one at a time and we'll explain.
Okay, well, then I will entertain a motion to adopt by resolution the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Ren Fu Villa residential project dated January 2025.
So moved. Okay, I'll second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco and a second by Councilmember Marks. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 7-0. So the next motion is a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading for the zoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the city council.
Someone has to make the motion.
A motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Ramirez.
Vote?
Now, now vote. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. Now the clerk is directed to read the motion, read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending the zoning map designation of property identified as assessor parcel number 810-23-005, located south of Santa Teresa Boulevard and north northeast of Miller Avenue, from agricultural to residential hillside, consistent with the Gilroy 2040 general plan, hillside residential land use designation for the property.
Because of the previous motion, she does not have to read the rest of the ordinance. So now a motion is in order to introduce the ordinance. Yes, number three.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to introduce an ordinance of the city council approving zoning amendment, application Z2203, to re-designate a 37.5 acre site from agricultural A1 zone to residential hillside RH zone. Consistent with the 2040 general plan, I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco and a second by?
A second.
Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, so now the last motion is to adopt a resolution approving the tentative map application.
So I'd like to adopt a resolution approving tentative map application TM2202 to subdivide the property into 54 single-family residential lots, adding the condition, the planning condition with the following language, that's consistent with Current Cottage and Royal Townhomes, that Clipper Card, developers shall provide new owners at the close of escrow a public transportation Clipper Card preloaded with $100. Developers CCNRs shall include a provision that requires the HOA to load said card with an additional $100 per year.
So I have a motion, I have a second. So motion fails?
Motion fails for lack of a second, yes.
For lack of a second.
Can entertain a, a, a new motion then.
Okay, I will entertain a new motion.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
So a motion to adopt a resolution approving tentative map application TM2202 to subdivide the property into 54 single-family residential lots. The motion is by Councilmember Bracco, a second by Councilmember Marks. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes unanimously, and that concludes the action on this item.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, unfinished business, we have none. Item 12, introduction of new business, we have none. 13, future council initiated items, we have none. And item 14, city administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items to report on tonight. First is the Santa Teresa Fire Station update. At your March 17th council meeting, you will be considering approving of the tentative maps that were included in the settlement that the city had with Glen Loma. And due to that action on the 17th, Glen Loma is required to deposit $2 million 10 days prior to that considered action. So on March 7th, the city will have received the $2 million in cash from the Glen Loma Corporation. And so with that, we have the land and we have a considerable amount of cash. And with that, we will be starting the city's internal capital improvement project kickoff meeting this week as well. So we have just about everything we need, and so things are moving along. And if you are familiar with Morgan Hill, they are almost finished with their fire station. We've been able to visit that and get some good best practices and some good information to help us update our current design for the fire station we had years ago. Second, we got some unbelievable good news on a Monday, which we will take any time. The city of Gilroy was awarded a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant to the tune of almost $1 million. And that grant goes to two different projects. One is $142,000 for sidewalk improvements at Church Street. And first, if you know where El Rancho Market is, there is not a sidewalk there. There's a guy who runs there every week. It is not safe, and so we have from the federal government about $150,000 to improve that, which will also help the kids across the street too, over at St. Mary's. The second project that I'm really excited about as well is, if you are familiar, Christopher High School on Day Road, Santa Teresa Boulevard, it is a hodgepodge of traffic engineering and continues to be an issue of a lot of safety. We're doing trails in that area, it's, you know, trying to do the best we can to improve a very substandard intersection. Well, today we got $785,000 from the federal government to upgrade the guardrail, construct an ADA compliant access to the Lions Creek Trail along Santa Teresa Boulevard. So all total $1 million, just for asking. And the last, which is a very, very sad one for me to report, that this is Beth Miner's last meeting with us. Beth has decided to give up with us and become a professional retired grandmother. And I tell, I cannot blame her, but I personally wanted to thank her for saving us during the election. She is a local, 69 years in Gilroy?
Forty-two in Gilroy.
Forty-two in Gilroy. And so she came here to help her town out, but she was happily retired, and we, we hope she happily worked with us, but we will miss you very much. And I want to thank you for just being the rock that we needed when we've had some tough times. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Jimmy. I appreciate that.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
And I have enjoyed my time here. I want to thank the council and Jimmy for this opportunity. I did enjoy it, and I enjoyed working with everybody on the team. They have been great, and if they need help, they can call me, and I'll answer their questions. But thank you, and thank you again, Jimmy.
Thank you. City attorneys report?
Okay, I have no report, except I would say it's been a pleasure to work with Beth, and having a competent and knowledgeable city clerk is an invaluable asset for a city, particularly in election year. Fortunately, this is not an election year, but anyway, let's go to the closed sessions then. We have two of them, okay?
Yep, thank you.
I will lead you. So 16.1 is conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to paragraph one of subdivision D, Government Code Section 54956.9, Gilroy City Code Section 17A113A. Gendolfi v. City of Gilroy Superior Court Case 24CV444165 filed July 26, 1024. Twenty twenty-four, sorry. The second one is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54956.8, Gilroy City Code 17A8. Property is Gilroy Gardens Theme Park at 3050 Hecker Pass Highway, and the APNs are given on the agenda. Negotiators are Jimmy Forbes and Victoria Valencia. Other party to negotiation is Gilroy Gardens Family Theme Park, under negotiations price and terms of payment for sale or lease.